This individual is just out of the...
Got you, it's a week tonight.
Try one.
All right, if they are in time, I'll call our meeting to order, call please.
Bobbit, here, Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a form, please God, hit it there. Dear Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, dear Lord, as we go about our business here, I ask that you will be with us, give us some guidance and some directions, dear Lord. Again, we thank you for the many blessings you give us, we ask that you will deliver some rain to our parched earth once more, dear Lord, as our farmers are in dire need of getting their crops in and to help them be bountiful, dear Lord, and that those crops can then come back tenfold to you, dear Lord. We ask that you be with all those affected by the wildfires and those farmers and ranchers, especially out in Dewey County, and the young man, radar operator that lost his life saving other people's property, dear Lord. Again, I ask you to be with all that we say and do, that we dedicate our work to, and this is all in our precious name.
Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting had.
Consider an act on the minutes for April 30th and May 7th, 2018, regular meetings.
I make a motion to approve minute. I'll second that motion.
Yes, move, Ronk, second to approve the minutes for April 30th and for May 7th, regular meetings, call in favor.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to review. I realize I have this one on, referred typed as special, which will just take me a second to check.
Oh. Okay, which one do we...
Now, that was for May the 7th?
Uh, we did both, the 30th and the 7th.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Together, okay.
Gotcha.
That's good tips.
Well, I look nice. So I gotta fix this one, because I put a special instead of regular, and it should've been regular.
Uh-oh.
But I'll fix that, all right.
Comments from the public on the below agenda items? None. Item A, ODOT lease purchase agreement, two John Deere 6155M cab tractors with a John Deere standard farm loader on one of them and a Flexwing mower cutter.
I move to approve.
Has Steven signed the whole name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
Ronk moves, has seconds to approve both ODOT lease purchase agreements as outlined, call in favor.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to review.
Does he got... Do me a favor. Do you have some desk?
He's gonna... Well, you guys start on the next item, I'll go fix that.
Okay.
Did she check on something else?
No, Brandon's coming, he's trying to get something printed off.
You still need Desi?
Yeah, I need Desi.
Hi, will you come in for a sec, I just realized I gotta change one thing on the minutes. Okay, thanks, bye-bye.
It is 14, right?
Yes.
It is 14.
Good morning, sir. There's a sign-in sheet right down there at the end of the table, if you'd sign in.
Do I have to sign on it? Desi, I don't remember if I do or not. The city...
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we call the... Let's have her do it after you guys do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We are down to item B, hazardous mitigation plan, the Noda representative, Abraham Brandon. Brandon, would you hand it please?
Do what?
Hand me your hat, okay. We are down to the hazardous mitigation plan.
Okay, um, this is Noda. They're gonna be assisting me with the hazard mitigation plan as long as it's okay with you guys, that's kinda what we're here to talk about today. Um, we just kinda wanted to go over what was involved with the hazard mitigation plan process, in case you guys had any questions. Um, to go over the new way they're wanting it done.
Okay.
So, and let you answer or ask any questions you might have of them. But this is a copy of the new way they're wanting our hazard mitigation plan done. And, just a second.
Vicki Eggers.
And this is about half of our current hazard mitigation plan.
Patty what? Lick lighter.
The other half is still printed. And then here is a copy of our NOI, that's sent off to the state, our newest intent for their grant program, that will, this is in, paying for the plan to be written.
So the project's gonna cost $43,750.
Yes, ma'am.
And the county has to come up with $8,750 and then that grant?
That's our in-kind, yes.
Yeah. Our in-kind, and so then the grant would be $35,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So...
It's down a little ways, anyway.
So the... This 2011 grant, is that, is it an working document, it looks like, is that the one?
That's the one I've been working on, yes.
Okay, so all the pink changes are the ones you made?
Those are the changes that I'm working on, that's what the state has suggested before they switched to the new plan. That's the way they wanted us, that's the way we'd started working on it, before they instituted the vote, what they call the Faux County Plan, which is the one that I gave. So then, once they instituted that, we had to stop, and now we're having to transfer everything to the way the Faux County Plan is done.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
When can it be completed by, because right now we're out of compliance.
We're out of compliance.
Right, so when can, how long does it take to complete this document? Um, generally, the, if you receive the grant, it's a three-year grant, but we do not take three years unless there's extenuating circumstances, and I don't foresee that being the case, we've only had that happen one time, and that's because I was the only one who could do hazard mitigation plans, along with all my economic development responsibilities. So Patty has been hired to work on hazard mitigation plans and our regional transportation planning, so she has the time to make sure everything gets done in timely manner. Generally, it's less than a year, from when we start working on it to FEMA approval, has been averaging about nine months, and that's because FEMA can take up to 45 days, once it's submitted to them, before they have to respond with changes or approval or whatever, so it can be up to 45 days. And if they find one thing wrong, then we have, like, 10 days to get the changes back to them, so it's a pretty short turnaround time on that stuff. But, like I said, generally, it's, we, the actual part we work on takes less than six months.
Vicki, we heard too last week, received some information through different organizations that, us being out of compliance, we cannot, we cannot apply for federal money. Have you run into this before?
It, yeah, what it is, you can't apply for mitigation grant money. You cannot? You cannot, if you're out of compliance.
Okay.
But if you would, say you would have, God forbid, you would have wildfires in Grant County that will not prevent FEMA from coming in and offering assistance like they do with everybody else, okay? That's one thing, that was a misconception that came out several years ago, that for our compliance, they won't help us with anything, well, that's not true. It limits you on FEMA help, but only on applying for grants to do these projects.
That's only the hazard mitigation.
Yeah, yeah. So it's only for mitigation, for example, you lose a bridge and you say, okay, well, that bridge has flooded over, you know, five of the last 12 times, and we'd like to mitigate it to upgrade it. Right. That would not be allowed. That would not be allowed, but if you have a fire in Grant County, the FEMA will come in and assist, you know, like what happened in Dewey County, because Dewey County, um, I don't remember if their plan's out of compliance, or it's almost out of compliance, but if it would've been out of compliance, they would still get the same amount of emergency assistance from FEMA.
Does this include the assistance to firefighter grants? You know, that they've got?
No, I don't think it does.
It's separate.
I don't, yeah, yeah, it's a separate pot of money. My understanding is it's only for hazard mitigation.
Okay.
Just like Medford is wanting to apply for something, I don't know, storm siren, maybe, I know there's a lot of people trying to get new storm sirens and stuff, they cannot apply, because the county plan that they're a part of is out of compliance. So CDGs, can't probably apply for those? Yeah, yeah, because that's, that's through Department of, that's through HUD, and so, yeah, those are still, you're still eligible for federal funding. They used that as a threat a few years ago, to get people to do it. Well, I don't understand if the City of Medford is applying for a grant for sirens, why they couldn't apply, unless they're, they're not mitigating that, are they? I mean, and it's... Well, it's, the storm sirens is one of the few things you can apply for in the hazard mitigation world, that doesn't actually mitigate damage, it's saving lives. So, because it's a tornado issue, so, you know, tornado, you can't prevent a tornado, or lessen the impact of tornadoes, but you can do something to help save lives, and so that's one of the few that, that works. So, um, I helped last time on the road there, I went with you to the community deals I think of us did. Right, yeah. So, the last time, we had to put money out, and we prorated it by, you know, what the city's population was. Population, yeah. We're not gonna do that this time. No, no, Brandon and I have spoken about it, and the, your match will be the time that he puts in helping with it, and then, like, the committee members, their time, you know, we'll track their time and their mileage, come to meetings and those kind of things.
You have to have one person from every jurisdiction in the county.
Yeah. So that... And it's listed in the plan, yeah.
It's listed, it should be listed in the plan, but it is our old plan.
Yeah.
But it's pretty much like one person from every school district, one person from every...
Superintendent, and it has to be a decision maker from each of those. And you already reached out to them, and they're all on board.
Well, yeah, they, for us to do it, they all have to be on board, we just have to update who the new people are.
They've contacted them all, and they said, yes, okay.
No, no.
Okay.
The NOI is the first step, so they have to get the NOI approved first.
You're not allowed to proceed in the planning process until the NOI is approved and your grant has been approved. If you start the process with your, with your committee members and everything, before you get your grant approved, they will not give you the money.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, you can't start work.
You can't start it until you get your money, until you get approved for the money.
The grant's approved, yeah. And about how long does it take to get the grant approved?
Usually within 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah, the process, once we get the plan, it goes to public review, during the public review period, we send the preliminary to Oklahoma Emergency Management, to their plan reviewers to review and comment on, and help us tweak it. Once they say it looks good, then it's sent to FEMA, so, um...
And the grant is a reimbursement grant?
Yeah.
Which means our portion, or that portion has to be paid upfront, we submit that to FEMA, and then they reimburse, or not FEMA, but to the state, and then they reimburse us the cost.
So we have to submit $8,750 check?
We have to submit once a quarter, is it once a quarter?
No, it's, the way we do the billing is, when the plan is ready, go to public review, we submit an invoice for 50% of the total.
Of the $35,000.
And then, because it's reimbursement grant, Grant County pays that invoice, then they submit the request for reimbursement, and... So we pay it upfront? Right.
Yes, it's always been that way.
And then you get reimbursed back, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, used to, you could... So we'll have to set up a new account if we do that. Yeah, used to, they'd let it slide a little bit, you know, you could send in, you know, the invoice or request reimbursement before the check or warrant was cash, but now you have to send a copy of the warrant after it's cleared the bank.
Yeah, because they used to just let them invoice us, then we could just send the invoice straight to the state, and the state would cut us a check. Now, they want proof that we've paid it before they'll reimburse us for it, that way, they're not sending us money for something that's not actually been done.
Right, yeah. There's no, they can't, they can't deny the payment.
No, once our grant's approved, yeah, they pay.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, they make us pay it upfront, and then they reimburse us for it.
And the state of, the state of Oklahoma's funding isn't very secure right now. Well, it's pass-through, is what it is, it's not state money, it's FEMA money, so it's just a pass-through situation.
It's money they already have.
Yeah, it's money they've got set aside specifically for that.
How many counties in Oklahoma are in your area, Noda, have done this? Um, one. They just instituted this new...
Major county's the only one.
Yeah, major county's the only one in our area, Woods County has submitted their NOI, and we're assisting them with it.
Blaine County.
Blaine County has submitted their NOI.
Yeah, I think there's only three counties in Northwestern Oklahoma with the current hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, and those are, you know, expiring.
Those are about to expire.
Yeah, well, Alfalfa County is also submitting.
Yeah, ours too, that's right.
I think theirs expires next year, in 19?
Is it 19, or is it...
Or is it October 19?
There's some in October, and I don't know which ones are October. Are you guys October?
We're October.
And ours expired last year.
Last year.
October last year.
So I think Alfalfa is this year in October, yeah.
Two years ago.
And the hazard mitigation plan...
Two years ago?
Yeah, it was when Rich was still there.
Yeah, it expired before, it expired before I started.
He said it was before it had expired.
It expired the month, like, I started in September, and then it expired in October, when I started.
Are we talking 16 or 17?
16.
16, yeah.
So we're off to two years.
Yeah. Like Woods County, theirs has been expired for, like, 10 years?
Uh, yeah, eight, yeah, at least eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, and it's a, the, the plan is only good for five years, you have to go through this, and it has to be redone every five years.
Yeah.
And that's why they normally do a three-year cycle, it takes you about, to do your, your plan.
I said, most of them don't take the full three years, but I do know Garfield County actually took them four, yeah, five years.
Yeah, I think that's tough to him, except it took him five years.
To get theirs written, but we were not involved in that process.
That was Mike doing it by himself, yeah.
No, they...
Well, Mike and what's her name?
Judy Sue.
Sue, thank you.
Yeah.
I was like, I know who it was, Judy Sue, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, our main thing is, is we've gotta get, get started and make progress, get it put in place, you know, I mean, my guy's two years out, and if it's gonna cause problems, even with mitigation, that's not good.
Yeah, yeah, because, like I said, there's, there is money out there available to mitigate from different things, whether it's storm shelters, you know, things like that, sirens, you know, other things, so...
Okay, it's one of those big brown folders. Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, you said this is the start of the...
That is the, what they call the Faux County Plan.
That's the template.
That's what the state calls it, the Faux County, and that's the template on how they're wanting it done from this point forward.
It takes out a lot of the fluff and extras, and it's supposed to be a much more uniformed.
They're condensing it, that one's about 70 pages long, our current one's about 277 pages long.
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, they can, 300 to 400 pages.
So we have to cut out about, yeah, 200 pages.
Yeah, they've decided, things that they've told us in the past need to be in the plan, well, okay, yeah, maybe, maybe it really doesn't need to be in there, so, that's why it's a smaller plan, a lot of the documentation, they're not requiring like they did before, so...
It's all changing.
Yeah.
Okay, we've submitted the NOI.
Yes.
And we're starting that process, so...
Yeah, submitted that to Matthew Rollins at the state, he has taken over for...
Linda.
For Linda Adams, yeah, because she passed away. She was the one who did all of our grant and NOI stuff, but she passed away, so now it's gonna go through Matthew.
So it's a little bit slower right now until they replace Linda, so...
Yeah, so it might take a little bit longer.
So that being said, with that submitted, can we start? And we can't do nothing?
Can't do anything until our grant gets approved.
But usually the NOI only takes about a week or two.
Right. Our NOI?
Because it's contract, you can't submit a contract to anybody without it coming through the board of commissioners, so it's dated today, right, you're submitting it today?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, dated today, so...
So we need to put that...
I move to approve the, yeah, NOI for the hazardous mitigation plan for Grant County.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Ronk moved, has seconded to approve the, to submit the NOI for the, that's a notice of intent for the hazardous mitigation plan for Grant County.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll just tell you, once the NOI comes back approved, for Brandon to start working on, we will send you guys a contract for Noda, for us to help with it, and we'll make sure, I'll send it to Brandon, he'll make sure it gets on the agenda, so you can approve the contract, and we can, we can start helping.
What do you got there, P.O.s?
I didn't mean to run that one out.
We're done.
You guys must have plugged Bernie Rub there, though.
Oh, I have that effect on me. Cleared a room in a heartbeat. Yeah, you did, I said, did. I don't know. I kinda wanna know myself. Keep an eye on me, I'm telling you.
Notice to bidder 14 and 28, 2018 to December 31, 2018.
It's just materials, right? She's got it listed, listed later.
Well, I think, because the new law goes in effect on November 1st, you can do in-place bidding, they've got that passed, and the governor's signing it, so if we want it on our list, we can do, and we'll be able to use it till November 1st, but it's good for two, it'll be good for us.
Cindy asked me whether we wanted to put that on there, and I said, yeah.
So it'd be like asking...
I forgot about that.
Yeah, so that, so that needs to make sure on our bid list that we, that that's noted, Mindy, when we go out for that, that that's effective on November 1st.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, just like materials and labor.
Yes, and Ronk seconded to go out for subsequent bid for materials and labor, and the labor in place would be effective through the legislation from November 1st, 2018, call in favor. Um, I, Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to review. Yeah, it's not quite number 30, so we're gonna...
You can, you can go ahead and slice them open, but while we're waiting for...
Talk to you in a minute. I'm Jim Glaser. With the fair board.
I guess you got your material again?
Yep, everything good.
I move to skip item. And review.
Yeah, okay. Ronk moves to skip to item out and review, and has seconds, call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All...
Item, item what? L. L. And review, paying the purchase orders, we're skipping down and going to start reviewing, paying the purchase orders. Motion to review.
If ever one would make sure they sign in on that sign-in page down there, we'd be sure for sure.
Thank you. I mean, so...
Yeah. Chair here.
No, just, no, because we can just slice them open, but do not... Okay, I didn't remember in a while.
Thank you.
They have skipped down to item out and review. Okay. Purchasing orders, and I was just getting these, oh... Okay.
We didn't know if we had a transfer or no...
No transfer, no, uh, she just said she worked on it. And Desi took this with the ODOT lease, so she wanted to pass the... How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Desi, excuse me, I have trouble with the...
Why would you do that?
Did you sign? That everyone signed?
Yeah. We're trying to slow it up a little bit.
Okay.
You've seen me look like that before? With a closure? Unusual. I kinda, I like it, though, because others always get all rusty. Camera for very long.
Cam around for very long.
What are you looking for?
Those minutes. Yeah, go ahead and sign. It is nine thirty, we need a motion to remove, to move back up to item D and open bid packet oh five twenty eighteen.
I make a motion to move back up to item D and open the bid.
I'll second that.
Has moved, Ron seconded to return to item D and open bid packet oh five twenty eighteen, purchase of water tank for the Deer Creek Fire Department, all in favor? Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess. All eyes motion to approve unanimously. One bid received. One bid received. Have a bid from. Blanchett Manufacturing. At this time, they do not want to submit a bid for the unit. So they have.
No bids.
And that was the only one. We will have to defer that back and let them know that they received the bids. So no action. Item E is opening bid packet oh six twenty eighteen, purchase of material for bridge two seventy, two seventy-one A for D three.
Move to open.
Second.
Ron moved, has seconded to open bid twenty, or oh six twenty eighteen for material for two seventy, two seventy-one A. The purchase is from Railroad Yard. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, all in favor? Bobbit, Ron.
Aye.
Hess. All eyes, motion to approve unanimously. Okay, first one is from Railroad Yard. Bridge two seventy is for materials is fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three fifty-two. Bridge two seventy-one A materials is thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight sixteen. And no bid for.
That's, that's a separate bid.
Oh, that's a separate one, I apologize, okay, that's, okay, gotcha.
It's already recorded.
The second bid is from Sunbelt. And bridge two seventy materials is forty-eight thousand nine seventy-five ninety-five. And two seventy-one A is thirty-eight thousand forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Three eight oh four six, what?
Three eight oh four six point six four. Two seventy was forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five ninety-five.
Well, I guess they've had all this.
Give me action on that title on. If I consider, if open, I consider.
You have a K and O on material?
No.
Oh, you didn't, okay. I move to approve Sunbelt on, for materials on bridge two seventy. And Railroad Yard for materials on two seventy-one A.
I'll second that motion.
Ron moved, has seconded to accept the materials for bridge two seventy from Sunbelt for forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents and from Railroad Yard for a bridge two seventy-one A for thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion to approve unanimously. Now to bid oh seven twenty eighteen, construction of bridge two seventy and two seventy-one A. Do we have a motion to open those bids?
I should move. Second.
Has moved, Ron seconded to open bid packet oh seven twenty eighteen, construction of bridge two seventy and two seventy-one A, and we have three bids for that, we have four bids for that one. First one is D's welding. Just as they come across. It's like I take them as. Let's see, did Ron move the second?
Max.
He moved and you.
I seconded.
You seconded, okay, thank you. Um, let's see, if I, if I'm reading this correctly, did you bid it to me for both bridges or did you want to build both bridges, not to bid one or the other?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
To, to build, as if they were one.
One, okay, not yet. So, uh, D's welding is eighty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. The second bid is from River Ridge. River Ridge bid eighty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five sixteen, wow, that's close.
Mm-hmm.
K and O. Bid fifty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and their pile driving beyond quantity of two hundred, well, their total bid is fifty-five one twenty-five and if they have to go beyond two hundred feet of pile driving, they're at four thousand dollars, so it'd be fifty-nine one twenty-five, so.
Plus four thousand.
Yeah, plus four. Or over two hundred feet. And this is Railroad Yard. And their bid is one hundred and four thousand dollars even.
I move to approve K and O construction for the fifty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars plus the four thousand if the pile driving is over two hundred.
I'll second that.
Ron moved, has seconded to expect, to accept the bid from K and O for fifty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Okay, total, plus the four thousand.
Yeah, you said fifty-five thousand.
Well, the bid was fifty-five thousand one twenty-five plus four thousand.
Oh, I thought it was fifty-nine thousand.
No, no.
My, my, my motion was wrong then.
Okay.
I rescind that motion. And, and I move to approve K and O for fifty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars plus the four thousand for pile driving over two hundred feet.
I'll second that.
Ron has moved to approve fifty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars plus the four thousand if needed for the over two hundred feet of pile driving, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Yes.
All eyes motion to approve unanimously. Next opening is for bid packet oh seven, let's see, it's oh eight eighteen, lease purchase of an oil distributor truck for D one and D two. D one and D three. D one and D three. Yeah. D one and D three.
You said D two.
Oh, I'm sorry, just, just making, yeah, we need a motion.
I make a motion to open, uh, oh eight dash twenty eighteen bid for oil truck.
I'll second.
Has moved, Ron seconded to open bid oh eight twenty eighteen, lease purchase of an oil distributor truck for D one and D three, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion to approve unanimously. The first bid is from Van Keppel. And it is a, it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Lease, the lease purchase is sixty months, would be at three point three percent, payment would be thirty-two ten sixteen. Seventy-two months is at three point three seven percent, would be twenty-seven twenty-three eighty-one.
Just repeat that again, please.
The seventy-two is three point three seven percent for payments of twenty-seven twenty-three point eight one.
Okay.
Eighty-four months is at three point four three percent and the payments would be two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents, the quote is good for thirty days. The, and the quote includes a two hundred dollar dock fee. It is for a new entry, two thousand gallon distributor on a Kenworth chassis with auto transmission to be delivered in July of twenty eighteen. Is there any options, is that, that was the total package, right?
Right.
Bid two is also from Van Keppel. Okay, the difference is, this is a ten, that was an automatic transmission.
This one's made.
And this is a ten speed standard. It's, it's on an I H S, or I H C chassis.
Okay.
And it's to deliver within ten days. And the bid is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Enter, the payments for sixty months is three point three percent for payment of three thousand seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Seventy-two months is three point three seven percent interest for a payment of two thousand six hundred and ten sixty-eight. Eighty-four months is three point four three percent for payments of two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight ninety-four. And that quote is good for thirty days and it includes a two hundred dollar dock fee included in it.
I have a question. Ron. Um, when you say July delivery, does that mean any word from July one to July thirty-one? Or you know about?
Suggested, excuse me, suggested second to third week of July, just whenever it shipped to us.
Hopefully no fires.
Hopefully.
Well, I think a good deal, that could be a, a good deal.
I think so too, and I, no more than, no more than we have to do this year, I think. I think second to third week of July, isn't that what you said?
Yes.
It'll ship to them, ship, and it's gonna take a week to get to them.
That gives us the entire month of August, basically. In the heat of the summer to, to do our shipping. And, you know, I'm, I'm looking at less than twenty-five miles.
Yeah, well, July is a bad deal for us anyway with harvest going on.
Yeah. I hope it's over with by the end of it.
Well, it's gonna be short this year.
Time to start my law parties.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Farm planting and everything else.
I, I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're comfortable with that, I'm ready to make a motion. But, but, these are the exact same body, right? Just the different chassis.
Truck, the chassis part, yes.
Yes. I, now, where, where do you feel comfortable here?
Well, I'd just assume, keep it like sixty or seventy-two, I don't want to go out for.
I, I'd just, just assume, get it open that way.
Sixty.
If you're, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
That being said, I move to approve the, the first bid from Van Keppel for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars for Kenworth chassis with automatic transmission and admire distributor body.
And finance.
And finance for sixty months at three point three percent with Oklahoma State Bank.
I'll second that.
Ron moved, has seconded to accept the bid from Van Keppel for two thousand gallon oil distributor truck, truck on a Kenworth chassis, auto transmission for one hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and to finance it for sixty months at three point three percent interest from OK State Bank, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes motion to approve unanimously. Opening considered, bid packet oh nine twenty eighteen, sale of free fare cattle barn and removal from premises, one bid?
I make a motion to open the bid.
I'll second.
Has moved, Ron seconded to open bid oh nine twenty eighteen, sale of free fare cattle barn and removal from premises, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion to approve unanimously, we have one bid from Larry Berg Rentals LLC, country Oklahoma.
I made the motion to open.
Okay, thank you.
You second.
And the bid is for twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Per pan?
No, removal, sale and removal of said, but unfortunately it is not memorized.
Okay, good. Oh, oh. I actually, I mean, I, I saw him sign O's and I just didn't sign, I mean, I...
Did he ask you to notarize them?
Well, I'm not a notary, but it's notary or clerk.
Okay.
So, I, he filled that out right in front of me and signed in front of me. And I, I mean...
I don't know.
That's a Stephen question.
Okay, give me those you're asking, because I mean, I'll, I'll, I swear I did. And then he took them and he signed them and sealed them up, but I did, I mean, I'm... Hi, it's Cindy.
Something you get from that.
Okay, Larry Berg had submitted a bid, he came into the clerk's office, and I saw him sign all the paperwork except for when he, the part where he submitted the amount, but I didn't sign, I mean, they're not notarized, but I witnessed it's can be a notary or a clerk. Can I still do that, or does it need to, this is on the fair barn removal of the pen, and it was a sealed bid. Is it, can I go, can we go ahead and accept the bid? It was the only bid that was on that item. And I, he signed all the documentation that goes with the bid and in front of me, but I, I forgot to sign it before I handed it back to me. Or, or he didn't ever, I mean, I gave him the thing and then he didn't hand it to me to seal it up in the envelope, but I watched him sign it all, and even on one of the documents you can tell, 'cause I'm the one who filled out part of it for him. Well, I'm not a notary, but it can be signed by a notary or a clerk. So, can I go ahead and sign it now and then the board make a decision on this bid? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, bye. It is not a completed bid. They're at the local county, we can't even consider it.
Okay.
We just have one loop over another, and I apologize.
Well, now, now, can we move to?
If you don't get it, you, table, you can't accept it.
Table doesn't...
Here, here's your options, um, and Cindy, you probably need to back that up and do that, but once the bids have been opened, if you don't have, we did not receive a good bid, right, because that was the only bid, we can't accept it. Now, the second point is, now can we not take phone quotes to sell it? Oh. And you don't.
Can we, can we get him back on the horn and ask him?
Well, I think if you're, if you're gonna do that, the guy that tear down the hog barn's interested too.
Well, we'll, we'll call him.
Hi, Stephen, it's Cindy and the board.
Okay.
Uh, Stephen, since we only have that one bid on the fair grounds, and since it's not a good bid, since it's not signed, basically we have no bids, so...
I, I think that's correct.
Okay, so now that we have no bids, and can we go out for phone, uh, fax, phone fax quit bids? That we get a copy, you know, not sealed, but another bid process? Is that our second option?
Um, I, you know, I'd have to look at the statutes, but I think that's right.
Okay, we will, we will check the statute, and that might be our option too. So, if you could check that for us and let Cindy Pratt know, we'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, with that, yeah, when you do that again, and you do a phone solicitation, you have to have at least three people you call, and preferably it needs, it says phone fax, but preferably you need something written. So, you can do a written tape, fax it out, and ask for it to be faxed back in if the, if the DA says that, that's illegitimate.
And I can help you with the form, and there's actually a, there's a phone fax quote form.
Well, I can just swing by there and tell him to come up here or whatever.
Well, we need to hear from Stephen first before we know whether that's a viable option or not. Okay, great, alrighty. So, no action on that. Well, let's see, wait, it says open and consider, so we need the action would be, no action because we had no...
Then we didn't have bid.
We had no legitimate, no valid bid, right, alrighty. Okay, open and consider bid packet ten dash twenty eighteen, lease purchase of two thousand seventeen or newer tractor fifty-five horsepower or larger.
Leave it open.
Second.
Wrong moved, has seconded to open ten dash twenty eighteen, lease purchase of a two thousand seventeen or newer horsepower fifty-five or more. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Has? All eyes must be carried unanimously. The first bid is from... Livingston Machinery. Okay, the base bid is twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. The finishing mower is two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The blade is eleven hundred dollars. The front-end loader is seven hundred and fifty dollars. The arena tool with optional water kit and weights is eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And the PTO tiller is eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. And they did not bid financing.
So, it's an incomplete bid.
Well, they might, they, they might just not be willing to finance, if they're willing to settle to you.
Isn't that part of the bid though?
We said option, financing option. For the month term with the loan payment. I guess it's a financial option, but...
This, this says, open and consider, consider bid packs for ten dash two thousand and eighteen, lease purchase of two thousand seventeen or newer tractor.
The lease or purchase are, um...
Which a lease is required, but purchase would be, right.
I guess we just have to see if they could award it.
Right, right.
If it came to that.
If it came, yeah, right. And I don't, I can't, I don't even see what, what brand it is. I have no idea if it's a...
You would assume Massey, but...
Yeah. There's a lot of, you know, do they sell Kabutis? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
Says Massey Ferguson.
Massey Ferguson, twenty-seven one sixteen.
Okay, there it is, all right. Twenty-four. And that's a fifty-seven point three horsepower. And the PTO is a...
Fifty-seven point three horsepower at twenty-six hundred RPM. PTO with our forty-eight percent.
We have a bid from FW Zoladec. And it is a Case IH fifty A, fifty-three horsepower.
Fifty A?
Fifty A.
Okay.
And it's a fifty-three hundred horsepower. Um, and this is on that NJPA program. Uh, so it'd be, uh, the, the base is twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. The loader, the bucket, pallet forks, thirty-nine, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that's an L five forty-five. So, it would be a total of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the bid is good for sixty days. I don't see that they... Says, it must be crossed with the PTO already on it. It talks about a PTO as standard, the PTO as standard equipment on that. Let's see, then they have a, the rotor tiller attachment.
Problem.
The, it'd be twenty-two hundred dollars for the tiller.
Stretch.
Way reached.
And they've got two different ones. They've got a seventy-four inch, the seventy-four inch one is, tiller is twenty-two hundred dollars. And then a fifty-eight inch tiller would be eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. So, you've got several options on that one. The financing would be through the, uh, Bank of Kremlin. And it would be at five point five percent for thirty months with a balloon payment of fifteen thousand. They also bid a second tractor, it's a Case sixty A that has a s- uh, sixty horsepower motor. It's gonna be five thousand two hundred dollars. The loader, the bucket, pallet forks, that's three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Raise it to twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-eight. And tiller options, again, would be a, let's see, box blade is one thousand fifty dollars. The bid is good for sixty days. And they also have a Lucas metal seven-foot groundhog watering system is two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. You got a lot of things here to consider on this one.
I can scan all that stuff in and send it to you.
And the next one is from Prairie Land Partners. And they also are bidding under the in, national purchasing, NJPA's, uh, bid. So, we have a... We've got two of them here. First one is for a... A fifty fifty-five E tractor. And it's twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-four oh nine. Loader would be four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
How much?
Four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents. The... Oh, a mo-, the mower, grooming mower would be three thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. The box blade is one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents. And their forks, pallet forks are nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixteen cents. And your grater would be four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, the total on that tractor would be forty-one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the financing options are... These are interest rate, I'm gonna... Here we go. Well, the rate is six point seven percent. Six point seven percent, and it would be with, uh... I mean, I hear your, your watering system is on here, is fourteen ninety for the watering system. But I don't know who the, the financing is at six point seven percent, but I don't say who it's with, so... That, that was on the fifty fifty-five E. Then you have a bid for a sixty, or, excuse me, a forty sixty-six M. And it is thirty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
How many horsepower is that?
This is, uh, if the PTO is a fifty-two horsepower, but that would not be a tractor. Or maybe, no, that won't, that would be at fifty-two.
Well, it was, it's supposed to be for a fifty-five or bigger.
This, the other one is... Think you're gonna have to ask them because I'm not sure. See, this one doesn't even say what it is. And this is, this one's, I don't even know what this one is. And it's a, it's a cheaper tractor.
I do know that, that one is, is a, I was told by a salesperson that that is a fifty-five.
I'm gonna guess this might be a sixty-six. The PTO might be sixty-two.
Okay.
I'm, I don't know that for a fact. I think that's something that's needing to be clarified.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so...
Thirty?
Yeah, the mower is gonna be three thousand five hundred and sixteen ninety-eight. The box blade is one thousand three hundred and eighty-eighty-eight. The forks pallet deal is nine thirty-three sixteen. The grater is four thousand two hundred and seventy-five for a total of forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-three thirty-five. And then again, you go back here to find the water sprinkler set. The sprinkler kit would be one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars on that. And it would be financed at six point seven percent.
I'm not even... But I, I do notice that tractors that have...
But I, I do notice that tractors that have that automatic transmission instead of the standard shift.
Sink shuttle, sink shuttle transmission.
Be easier to get forward and back, you know, with a reverser lever.
Sink sh- uh, Jim, uh, a sink shuttle transmission, do you know what that means?
Yeah, it's, you, you don't have to use the clutch, you just shuttle it back and forth.
Is it a hydraulics transmission or?
No, it'll be, it'll be, uh, like an eight-speed probably.
See, my tractors have a forward and reverse.
Yeah, yeah, on the left-hand side, yeah.
Yep.
I'm assuming you're wanting to table this to take to the fair board for the calculation?
I would make a motion to table the, uh, the bid for the, uh, tractor for the fair round until we hear back from the, for that, with their recommendation.
I second.
Here's move, wrong seconds, to table the bid ten dash twenty-eighteen, new purchase of a twenty-seventeen or newer fifty-five horsepower tractor. Uh, from, from, all in favor? Jim Bobbitt, I draw.
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. Uh, Jim, can you take those over to Cindy's office and they will copy all that?
Okay.
You may take them all with you, uh, we need the originals left here.
Yeah, the originals need to stay here.
That sounds great.
Thank you very much. Okay. Change order oh oh one, O S H ambulance for bid twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen Palm Creek ambulance, twenty-eighteen four feet, four fifty and all signed.
Before that, hey Jim, and we do have to accept or reject prior to the end of this fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. So you guys have a little bit of time, but not just a ton of time.
Okay.
And, and if we reject and you still want to do that, we'll just have to go back out for bid after the first of the year.
So we ordered in a bid for two three road rescue. And for ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars on November thirteenth. However, the invoice again has to do with the siren and the wiring. Uh, well, he says in that change, you see, the replacement of the siren and wiring.
I actually typed it in, uh... Cause they didn't have one, so I just typed in the replacement.
So Stephen's good with accepting that as a bid change?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
So they did, they, the, uh, original bid specification did not include the replacement of the siren and wiring. And they had to put on the new siren and wiring on us. So it's seven hundred and thirty dollars, will Stephen get it signed off on?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, change order zero zero one for the bid twenty-seven dash twenty-seventeen.
I'll second that.
Has moved, wrong second, to, to accept the change order zero zero one, O S H ambulance for bid twenty-seven dash twenty-seven two for Palm Creek ambulance. For seven hundred and thirty dollars for additional to replace the siren and wiring, all in favor? Bobbitt?
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
This is, this was one for you, I mean, this is the rest of that O dot, and she went up, had Stephen sign off on the additional copy.
Oh, okay, so we gotta sign that again?
Yeah. Let's see, where do we sign this? There's only one up here somewhere that...
I think we had, I think we, yeah, I think we signed here, and I think Pat's friends there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I think here and here, yeah.
So just two of these on this hand is to sign?
Yes, and the reason there's two is cause I sent it, yeah, I had, and then the gentleman from O S H, I had him, so he's actually signed on one. But I, Stephen didn't bring the other one back until...
Oh, okay.
So the other one's signed off by Stephen, so.
So I?
We need some there, and there.
Do you want me to do this in front of a note reader?
No, I can sign off as clerk. Yeah.
Or clerk, or just, okay. And there's just these two?
Uh, yes.
Speaking of that, I didn't see, I haven't seen that purchase order in the deal yet for that ten thousand and so.
Oh, it's him, oh, oh, gee, that, you need to ask her about that. Hello, is Alex there? Okay. Hello, did we get that, on that ten thousand, and the one seventy-five? Uh...
To P and K?
To P and K equipment? That's that remainder of that. I, I think when I talked to you about it, you had like a stack about two feet high on the desk, so.
Cause gracious.
Okay, cause I thought, he said there was already P O and, you know, so... Right, he's saying it's not in the stack.
I haven't seen it anywhere.
Okay, what do you mean, you haven't got, cause she should've... Um, well, I thought there was invoices that I'd already given to you. Okay, well, can you, can you just look and see and then? Is that right, ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-four, is that that?
Um, Max.
That yellow page, here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the right amount, yeah. Right. And she said, can you? Okay, cause maybe she's, maybe Desi's holding it, okay, yeah, if you'll check, cause we're wanting that to run here.
We covered that back in.
Okay, thanks, fine.
Yeah, but I'm gonna receive the tractors you've got.
More than today.
Okay, cause you have to receive them before you can pay for them.
I bet we, I bet we got them before the day goes out today. Okay.
My guess is Desi was, but receiving report.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, both are gonna, that would make sense.
Yeah, let's just wait a minute.
You always throwing stuff at me?
I know.
Uh, just tell her, we'll wait, cause I'm sure she's probably waiting on the receiving report on that, that one that I just talked to Alex about.
Unless you wanna throw that one.
Okay, well, can I talk to her?
No, no, I'm gonna do it whenever.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We'll just wait till next week, cause they're, they're supposed, they're supposed to receive before we do that, so. All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, and you'll take those over and have them copy and then leave the original?
Wednesday, fair board.
Are you coming back at one thirty?
Probably not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Probably better get to work.
Cindy, can you take that off the, uh, update?
Oh, then I know.
I, he said he knew, knew about the work.
Okay.
Here's the P and K, and this is, I guess, the invoice.
Okay.
With the difference.
But we need to wait though, I guess, till we get the receiving report and all that. Cause we're, yeah, right, they have a paper that we have to answer, okay.
So we'll run it through next week.
Okay, okay, all right.
Just, at least we know where it's at, and, okay, good deal, thank you.
Uh-huh. Doesn't this look like fun?
Like a painting, painting.
Yeah.
This is, these will go with the, uh, the rider springs.
Mm-hmm, not as much as they do on Mondays. Boy, on Mondays at the first of the month, they have a staff they have to sign off on. They need a rope stamp, don't they?
Need your staff.
Yeah. I think how, you have to sign right here too. Didn't that, Max, wasn't that, that one place we missed on that last one?
Yeah, I think it was.
We have to say that they did.
I think it was, I think there is a...
Cause it says, um...
At the, at the assignment for the...
Date and the claim.
I signed the claim to bear and company and authorized the state treasurer to issue a warrant payment to set a signee and...
Right, and we heard you sign it.
You're the claimant. I think that's the one she sent it back to me on last time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
You bet.
Thank you.
See you, Kevin.
See you later.
Thank you, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
You're out too?
I'm out.
All right, we'll be that way, we'll see.
I'm blank. You bet, you bet, thank you.
Did they say how long material would be?
No, I, I just plan on making those phone calls later on today and I'll get back.
Be ready whenever you are.
Are, are you ready now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. Hope that I'm gonna catch up to fish, we then have fish fry in the morning. I'll, I'll get over and hand, and I can take the fry off.
I'm all for that. Do we need that devotion?
I gotta put my fishing license. Should we, we have to get a fishing license? Well, is there one in, is there anywhere in Bedford?
Oh, I don't know.
Maybe the Jiffy trail.
Yeah, we get five year one.
Yeah.
There's not much money.
Darn Ronnie's lifetime one didn't.
Roll over.
We didn't get our money worth ever on his life time.
Didn't get to roll over.
Yeah, that should roll over to the spouse, if you're under a certain age. Cause he had, he had nothing to fish in his lifetime. Hi, Jan.
She, she got the copy, the original's there in the office and I got the copy.
Good deal, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
See you, Hannah.
You're almost there.
Yeah. Close the rain.
Cody has a bit, he's training.
Where's your, where's your Jen now?
He loves to be outside. And so, he said he looked over and Corey had a spray bottle. And he's over there spraying the travel trailer and he picked up a rag. Wars was fucking Cody dog. He goes, "Okay, go get your rag." He goes and gets the rag. Cleaning it up, he says, "Train me up." I see, he's just so much like...
Oh, you also need help.
He's a Cody all over.
You probably want to go down there, but...
I would think you're good charge yourself.
Okay, I'm leaving.
You're a big boy, you knew it.
You might have to have no parents, bro, I know why.
Yeah.
Now I can ground you if you wanna be grounded, you know?
I think she'll do it to me.
I, I would.
Just because of you.
We, we grounded J.C. Drennan from the Tootsie Rolls. Cause he's tall.
Really?
We finally had quick put him out for a while. He's, he's grounded, he doesn't get any Tootsie Rolls. I love him to death.
Are you kidding?
We've got a snack for later. So I walked in this morning and all that's in the bowl was two Smarties. Well, cause we pay for them, I don't hurt my pocket.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. Well, I dropped them, find your Tootsie Roll.
Right.
I had to put the same part that you mom just... It's gonna like six hundred everywhere. I guess you buy the kind of people that like it and then we'll eat the candy out of your bowl.
That's a big deal when I was a kid, the Knights of Columbus would be selling big ones.
Oh, those are the best. They have the little notches in there where you could break them.
Yeah.
Those are the freshest Tootsie Rolls too. Now we actually better kick out and we just give them. Um, J.C. he's got his days, maybe hour, cause he just... And I'm thinking, most people who live at age can't eat them cause they stick to their teens.
Yes.
Do you want me to scan that stuff? That little mitigation stuff?
Not the pass.
But that other packet.
Pretty much, I think he's got it.
Okay.
He might have it.
Oh, he already have it in there.
Yeah. Are these all our AT&amp;T bills straightened out?
Uh-huh, I just put them on, cause I sent all this to the lady, a different lady, you know? And she's like, "Oh, I'll get back with you." Yeah. So I put myself an email to email on her. Cause I had sent her a whole, she had me send her every email correspondence I'd have with that David Lawson and all that. I did all that, that day.
Right. You did that, I saw it. Couple days ago on the internet, I bought the wrong motor. There's a, I think the brand name is like Shelby.
Mm-hmm.
It's a five section. Back wing over forty-two feet.
I'm not sure it's with that.
Well, I'm thinking you can stay up on the blacktop. Or up on the road and just unfold the wings.
Be hard to move around signs though, not get into the fence.
Well, that's when you'd have a person in front of you. But, uh... I saw that and I thought, wow.
I tried a Shelby mower one time, it had a side shift on it. The tractor stayed up in the road and the mower was off then.
Oh, it worked?
Yeah, it worked alright, but you had to pull it back in, do it around signs and stuff.
So was it kinda like that? Kinda like a, a Swather?
Yeah.
And the fact that it didn't work like that?
Yeah, went off the side, it pulled down, a lot of side draft, you know, and stuff to it. I mean, it was good, it was good cause you could stay up in the road, but yeah. You had to be careful, cause if you swung it too late, it'd get the sign.
This, this one I saw, it had, and I'm... I was talking to him about this before, it had gauge wheels on the front also. Where it would just dig in. I... I wish John would ever do that.
A side shift mower?
No, I mean have gauge wheels on the front.
Yeah.
Every other piece of equipment they make anymore has that.
Did you talk to the Ferris wheel? About letting your ring it down?
Oh, God, I was going to.
Oh, we're gonna do two stuff.
Or that.
Yeah.
Sure. Like you?
Yeah.
Shampoo and food's had five cases for ten dollars. Pretty good.
Think I swallowed that by the coffee. Ah, I imagine, I don't know, I, but we will, we'll work on that. I've, I've got some of that stuff that's just come in spray and it instantly pulls it out. Cause I think it did, it just concentrated all of that.
It's supposed to be different.
Yeah.
Document.
The coffee stain. We, we fast, I mean, well, I'm not, I wasn't in here, but...
I was ready to.
Cause when we were having him at a party, they...
Damn, baby, you're gonna go.
That would be nice.
See if you sit over the top of it, nobody notices, do you?
Right.
Give me measure prior to... I don't know what we're doing, so, we're gonna have to give them some classes. We don't really have an audit on that, we had some, some... Our deal was we made sure that started going to classes, we're trying to force that. I'm at the point that I've had to quit, if they don't follow the procedures, I mean, we don't approve them. Let me go back and say that I can't do this. Do we have any transfers?
No.
To approval of payment purchase warrants from...
I actually blew up room, last second.
Yes, move on, set to two, approve the payment of purchase warrants in current class, all paid.
Bob it.
Like, well.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes motion through.
Do we have any transfers?
No, no. Were there some blankets in there? Were those just? I think those are just the few.
Yeah.
Hi, did Alex have a blanket that she needed to go through? I thought she said.
Just want to tell them that you're ready to.
She said it was in here?
I never saw it.
I didn't either.
Where'd she? There's something different. Hmm, this is an eight bar. Um. And the POs are ready. So she just wants to come in, we'll look and see if we find it. Alright, thank you, buddy. I haven't seen it.
I, I never saw one.
She said I have. If it is, you executed it as a payment.
Yeah.
No, I, uh, I don't remember seeing that. I know I don't have one.
Remember what it was, Alex?
For Doug Sealy and Ashley Baker?
No, we never saw that.
No, we haven't seen it.
Right beside you.
I wouldn't. Um, we worked on some of the other things, the bids and.
You want me just to read round?
I can do that.
That would be awesome.
Okay. Easy, just.
Okay. I'll do that. Okay, no problem. I'll just lay, I'll just reiterate right away.
I move to approve blanket purchase order.
Second.
All clerk has second to approve blankets on paper.
Bobbit.
I wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes motion through unanimously. Correction, OSA and I Form Two Forty April Appreciation of Interest Income, EFA Fund Seventy-Six oh two to June and also we have two dollars.
Two dollars.
Five cents. All favor.
Bobbit.
I wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes motion through unanimously.
And this one, we just did it as, but it wasn't, it, on the three oh eight, I think originally had it set up as oh four hundred. Well, then apparently it didn't get changed here. So this is not an active account or an existing, and so... And as I put on here, that, um, shows it as oh four hundred, which is not a valid account. However, credit department is thirty-four hundred correct, and that's the correct account. So it really never went anywhere, but we just want to acknowledge that it was not correct on the three oh eight.
So we'll get that corrected on our three oh eights so that the future, they won't show up that way.
Alright. I can, I can. Yeah.
Correction for that.
I move to approve the correction.
Do you have to approve it if it did?
Or acknowledge it?
Just acknowledge it?
Oh, okay, yeah. Move to acknowledge, because it never really was put on the system.
We're, we're not acknowledging it if we're signed it, so. If we're signed it, we're saying we, we, yes, we agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's just a typo on the number down here, but it's not a real number, so, yeah, I suppose we need to.
So I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, wrong clerk has seconded to, uh, approve the correction of OSA and I Form Two Forty April from the Sheriff's Management Trust to lease rentals due to, uh, typo on the.
Department.
Department number. All favor?
Bobbit.
I wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
All eyes motion through unanimously. Call Steven down on the comdata thing. Is he ready?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
Go for your luck, honey.
Department.
Department number. All favor?
Bobbit.
I wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
All eyes motion through unanimously. We'll call Steven down on the comdata thing. Is he ready?
Oh, alright.
Yeah, good.
Okay, yeah, we're in the, he said to call whenever we were at the comdata discussions. Whichever he prefers. Alright. Uh. I think, okay, thank you, everybody.
You want to come up one thirty or something?
No, please.
Oh. While we're waiting him to come down, the standard zoning law for the SVA communications. Our standard letter for zoning at this time, that's if SVA Communication Corporation, out of Florida.
Can I make a motion to send him a letter, let him know that we have no zoning laws?
I second that.
Has moved, wrong seconded to, to sign, send a letter to, um, SVA Communications. Declaring at this time we have no zoning, but to check back for future references. All favor?
Bobbit.
I wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes motion through unanimously. Road crossing permits? None?
Wow.
Acknowledge receipt of performance maintenance statute or laws from color construction. That we just acknowledged, yeah.
Just, you must look at.
As it's right amount, uh, one point two three nine four three point oh three, Bobbit. Good to me. Tested.
Here's a copy, I might have just got it made a copy. I don't know why I made a copy, but I did.
Alright. We are down to the automated fleet fuel card contract with the state of Oklahoma with Comdata for the Grinch County Automated Fuel Card System. And you are up.
Um, yes, um, the, the board has the authority to approve the fleet fuel card. It's my understanding, though, that the county does not have a separate policy for fuel cards. And so I'm reluctant, um, to give my blessing on anything without an official policy for the fleet fuel card. I think that needs to be in place first before you go forward with that.
Could we put it in with our P card?
It's, it's, it's similar to, uh, the P card. Um, however, uh, it looks like, oh, the people that are going to be utilizing this, um... May be a little different. It's my understanding that, that the emergency services organization, so you're gonna have Holly, you're gonna have all these, um... Departments utilizing these fuel cars to fuel their, their fire truck. And it's, it's my worry that there won't be enough controls over the use of the fuel card with those. And it'll be easy for someone to grab it and just fill up their local pickup truck with fuel on the fire department.
The fuel card is issued to one vehicle.
So it's issued to a vehicle, not to a person?
That, in that paper, kind of, that first one right there.
Well, I mean, that's not gonna stop, that's not gonna stop somebody from grabbing the, the fuel card and fueling. The pickup with it.
Okay, there's two different ways. The standard P card cannot be used on statewide contracts for the fuel. The comdata card will be issued using this contract. It must be assigned to a vehicle. Or comdata fuel only card, this card will be issued using this contract for the purchase of fuel only, but is not assigned to a vehicle. No other products or service can be purchased with this card. So there's three different kinds. There's a, a standard P card, which is not this. There's a comdata card that they can buy tires, they can buy.
Mm-hmm.
It's for vehicle maintenance.
Anything, right. And then the other one, and that one, maintenance, is assigned to the vehicle. But if it's a fuel only max, it's a, it's not assigned to a vehicle. It's per, it's assigned to a person.
Well, even, even if it was assigned to just a vehicle, that's not gonna stop somebody from grabbing the card, stick it in the gas pump, fueling the pickup.
Well, I think you have better control if you sign it to a person. Because I think if you sign it to the vehicle, you're right. I think anybody walking by can grab that card and run with it. And with nobody knowing who used it, other than if you've got a video at the, at the place you use it. But if you sign it to a person, for example, on ours that we have is, it asks you lots of information that has to go in there. It asks what your vehicle number is, it asks.
So, you know, we, we probably need to reach out to the auditor's office and see if they've got... A policies and procedures manual that, you know, we can, can get to, to start with, rather than to have them to draft something from, from scratch. Um, and then, um, you know, we'll probably need to get everybody's input in on how those cards are gonna be utilized. Because we'll have to then customize that, uh, policies and procedures manual for.
All we was after was one card to have for the command vehicle whenever we, that task force went. If he was out there and you blowed a tire out, that's why we was wanting the comdata card, the maintenance part. Was if he was out there and you ran over something, you blowed a tire out, it give you permission to buy a tire or fuel.
But Max, could a P card not do that for you?
No.
It won't?
No. That's what they told me to state.
The P card?
Gibson's, uh, the Gibson lady that has, does the comdata said, did you, did you talk to her, Steve?
I, I did not. I just, I just talked with the auditor's office and got the statute number that shows that, I mean, you are authorized to, to have those cards. But you need to have the, I think you need to have the, the, um...
Procedure.
Internal control procedures in place before you issue those. Because, I mean, this is, this is something that, um, could be misused. I mean, I, I mean, it's just, somebody could grab the card and, and use it, and there's not, there's no follow-up with, with that.
You know, the, the P card, there, there are, um, procedures on that that like, if I'm gonna use my P card to go do something, we have to call in and get a hit.
The P card, the P card, yeah, the P card is issued to a single person.
Right, and you're liable for what's on that card.
Right.
Personally are liable for what's on that card.
And, and I think those, those same procedures probably need to be in place for the maintenance card and for any sort of fuel cards. Because I, I'm sure as soon as, um, you know, Holly and Nash and folks know that this is available to them. I mean, they'll be wanting to use that for their fuel purchases.
Then on ours, we have a tracking system and it's in our system, and we have everybody that has the card. And then it has, you know, when you filled up, how much you used, what vehicle it went in. And then we run a total out here, and we, we log how many miles per gallon that vehicle is getting, or how many gallons of fuel that vehicle is burning. Because if something goes, all of a sudden, it's always getting twelve or thirteen, and suddenly it goes to two or three, you're saying, uh-huh, maybe all that fuel didn't go in that vehicle. Or something that, that, we, we track that every month on all of our vehicles in our shop.
And that, that probably, that probably needs to be mandated for, I mean, if they're gonna use a fuel card, they can only, they, that, that's the only vehicle that they can use, uh, to, to put fuel in the card. And they have to follow those, those mileage guidelines.
But even if someone goes in our welding truck, it goes, it's documented on that one, and it's on his, that card. Cindy goes and fills the welding truck, it goes on her card, and between my fill-up and that fill-up, it still better be within a range. You know, grading's a little hard, because if you're pulling ditches, you're running a lot more fuel than if you're just, you know, going down the road smoothing up something. So you, you know, that's when you can go back to their, their, what they were doing that day, to their, that week. And, oh, they're pulling ditches, that's why their fuel consumption is more than what it was. So, yeah, I think. So your recommend, recommendation is to reach out to the auditor and see if, see if they have any kind of a policy in place?
Right. And then, um, it... Because, because you need to have those policies and procedures in place before you, you move forward with that.
So, Max, you good with that?
Well, you know, I give you Melissa, or that Gibson lady's number, because she's set this up all over the state. You know, Alfa County's doing this right now. Uh, I will reach out and see what kind of policies and procedures there.
They may not have any. They may not have thought that far ahead.
They may not have. They may not have. And I do agree that it's good to have this set up so you can track things. But we was intentionally, our intention was is to have one card that stayed with that vehicle or stayed with that. Which I understand, anybody can come in there and get that vehicle, they're gonna have to know the PIN number to that card.
Yeah, like, they, they don't share those.
That's right. We don't share their PIN numbers. But the thing about it is, is whoever takes that task force out there, that's what this whole thing was designed for, is to allow them to purchase fuel when they get there to the fire. Or purchase fuel when they get ready to come home, or to buy a tire, or, you know, we, we broke a, a power steering hose.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like you, you may, I mean, just the, it sounds like you have to have two cards, not just one card.
Well, I was gonna say, if it's assigned to a vehicle, Max, and you're, this truck is, is assigned to that truck, but this truck over here needs fuel, you can't use that card. So one card isn't gonna work.
Yes, you can. I talked to.
Okay, then let's fuel on, read these.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. But when I talked to, to the Gibson lady, I said, I have, I wanna have the maintenance card. I wanna have it in one vehicle, and that vehicle is in charge of the whole task force. And she said, yeah. I said, can I use that card for that one vehicle to fuel twenty fire trucks? She said, yes, you can.
It's not really been assigned to the vehicle, it's assigned to the, the head first.
To the organization.
Yeah, it's not assigned to the vehicle.
Right.
That makes sense.
It would, it would be assigned to the task.
It would, it would still have to be, it'd have to be assigned to the one person. It can't be, I mean, you, you've gotta have someone who's responsible for that card. So if you've got a CEO or an elect, you, elected officer that's in charge of that organization, he would be the one that has the card.
And I can't hand it, if I'm that person, I can't hand it to you, and you go out on the task force and say, here it is.
No, he would, he would have to personally, he's personally responsible. He's the one that slides it, and he's the one that has the PIN number.
Well, I think it can, I think we can do it. Like you said, we have the permission to do it. We just gotta establish some policies and procedures on how to control that and monitor it.
Yeah, I think so too, Max. I think we can do it.
Okay.
But I think we just gotta come up with some policies. Why don't you check around?
Well, I will.
Call that lady back and ask her who all is using it, and call those counties and find out what has them sent us copies of their policies. That gives us a starting.
Yeah, some of the, some of the larger counties, it'd be hard to track down who it is, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure Oklahoma County or Tulsa County has something in place.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't have a problem. I don't think anybody have a problem with issuing each person a, a card. Say you had five people who was involved. Say you had five people who's involved in the board, issue each one of them a card, and then you track it. Like you said, have a way to, to track that, to know.
Yeah, I mean.
You wouldn't have just one card for one people.
When I worked for Southwestern Bell, I mean, they had, every manager had a card that was issued to them for travel. Uh, you were personally responsible for the card, but that didn't stop, that didn't stop the misuse of the cards. I mean, people, it, it's, it's a temptation for people.
Yeah.
When they have that card and they know it's there, and they're short on money or whatever, to use that card for their personal vehicle.
Yeah. I agree. We went through that at Manchester Fire Department with a gentleman that, uh, was on the department at that time, not on the department no more. But he got the card, used the card. The thing he didn't realize was, is that Co-op had cameras at it. So whenever you reconciliate tickets at the end of the month, we, you didn't go on no fires, but you used five hundred dollars worth of pro- of, of fuel.
Yeah.
You can go back and look, and it, it's, it's plain as black and white right there where the fuel is going. Okay.
So we don't have to be done, so we just need to get some policies.
Okay. Okay, very good. Uh, that being said, do we need to take any action? We, we need to get the policies and procedures set out, and I'll work on that.
Destruction, that brings down IFT destruction or storage of archived records for county, impossible storage of issues. Steve, this might be something you might wanna listen to. You know, we're getting ready to redoing our courthouse, and we need to get all of the stuff off the roof, off that, that floor, because we gotta, they gotta have access to work in there. So, we've been going through, uh, our city's office, we work diligently trying to get that done. They're shredding a lot of it, uh, or, or, or securing it in pallets, what we need to destroy by fire or something that we're storing at my shop. All the records are gonna be destroyed after a burn pit, and we're gonna burn it or something like that.
We've got a ton of records up there that.
We need to start hitting them out.
I need a place to, 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 to take them.
That's the second thing. So, we were talking about, well, if each department get a storage unit, or, or they be responsible for their own, we don't want, we don't want Scott to be responsible for people, those records.
Do we have anything that's available here and around the courthouse? That's not outside?
Not that secure.
I'm not, I'm not confident that a storage facility is secure enough for our records.
So what, what?
Because, I don't know. I don't know. Um, I'll have to address this with Mike Fields then. Um.
We have to keep them for five years, but right now.
There's, we, there's stuff that, that I have to keep forever.
Forever, right. But as we, as we, like another day, the election board was taking boxes up, and I said, you know, those boxes are gonna have to come back down, so we've got to, we can't keep, we can't keep going up with them. We've got to, time is now. We, we don't have six months to think about this.
Well, um, I mean, pursuant to the statute, um, you know, the, it's the county commissioners that are responsible for, um, having us to have appropriate office space. So, I will discuss this with Mike Fields, and then I'll get back with you. You may wanna put this on for, for next week. I don't know if I'll get an answer, but between now and then, when I get off with it.
Give you two weeks, put it on, back on the twenty-nine then.
Okay.
The other option would be everybody to secure their own records in their office, you know. Yeah, it might be tight, you might have to stack them up against your walls till we get that done. But the, the deal is, is once we do that, that is overloaded with weight anyway, you know. When they, when we have that property across the street before, or generally.
Right, but, I mean, I'll have to look at the statute, but it may not be our office that's responsible for maintaining a place to have those records stored. It may be, um, you know, it may be your responsibility to provide that, that, that place. Um, and it just needs, it needs to be a secure place, but, um, there's, you know, at just the regular offsite storage places where they put a padlock on the outside, um, I mean, those places get robbed, and it's easy for people to go in and cut the padlocks off, and go in and just take whatever they want.
We have to. Do they get robbed, the ones we have here?
I, I don't know, I don't know about locally. All I know about is Oklahoma City, Edmond, it's easy for people to go in and just.
I'm one of them, president. So, yeah, so, I don't know. Yeah, we need some op, I guess, we need some options to figure out.
Well, the first question is, I gotta find out, is who is responsible for maintaining a place to store those records? And I gotta answer that question.
Can we do it on microfiche? Can you store on microfiche?
I mean, we've got, we've got, uh, that's, uh, the, the files that I have to have permanently are not something I can put on microfiche and destroy. I, by statute, I just have to maintain those files. I can't put them on some other media and get rid of them. The other problem with that is, you know, it's, uh, manpower.
Yeah, that's, you know, scanning everything. Yeah, you're right. That, that in itself is, you can wire five people and not get everything up in that attic scanned. So, and then, yeah, I don't know if you could even do that, because that might be for someone's top secret. Have to tell you, feel, look at it, see, probably, I don't know.
I don't want any part of that.
I don't, exactly. So, all right, if you can get that information back to us, but, um, we need, the things that can be destroyed, we need departments to be getting it out of there. So, if you've got anything that can be destroyed, we really need them coming down.
Good.
So, all right. And Cindy, if you'd send an email out, again, reminding people of the policy of what they can destroy, and, and that's up to them to destroy their records. So.
Do we have a date that we know that we have to get those things out of there by yet?
Yesterday. No. Um, they have not, so they're working on the jail, taking down the chimney right now. Uh, Cindy, what's the next thing they're gonna do after that? You've been.
Uh, well, they're working on the steps, and then, I really don't know, he hasn't really told me what the next one is, but I'm thinking, um.
Surely got a couple weeks.
I'm thinking, yeah, but roof is coming soon.
But roof will be done before windows or anything like that. So just now kind of. Yeah, I think they're doing some of the stuff at the sheriff's department, and I'm, I, I would say, I would say in the next, I would say in the next two, three weeks, probably.
Yeah, easily, I would say.
So, maybe we better put that on next week if you can find out who, so we can make the decision who's got.
I don't know that, um, our office will be able to move that fast. Uh, we may just have to get Scott to bring them down and stick them in the hallways or whatever till we figure out.
Do you remember when I asked six months ago if we could have a sheriff's barn ban like we used to? We used to do that.
I think that they said something about it was on Hula's personal property.
And we've got, I mean, like, I've got a farm, Bob's got farms, we've got places to go, do we not? We also have that Waukeeta place. I have an approved FEMA pit at my deal, and that's what we're doing, is we're, we're wrapping, shrink wrapping. Everybody can bring their stuff down, and we're putting it on pallets, and we're shrink wrapping it to make it secure in my shop, until we can do that. But we've been in a burn ban, we're not now, but we were gonna try to burn all that in my pit. But it's, uh, uh, but if you shred some of the stu- some of that, you can't, you gotta keep. It, you just can't get rid of. So you gotta sort through it, say what you can keep and what you can't. Right. So, get back to us and see who this.
I, I will do that.
Okay, let's see. Um, Mont Fire Department revisions contract to request of Henry and Hodgins construction manager, including exhibit A, guaranteed maximum price.
After, you know, we did this on seven, and, and Stephen and I, I think, both feel that what they're requesting is somewhat overkill.
It, it's duplicative, but, I mean, I don't have an issue with, with it, but by initially that.
This is what they requested. And here's the original contract. And these are all the forms that you guys signed, which say the same thing as what they have.
What does our legal counsel recommend?
I think it's duplicative. Um, I don't have an issue with you initializing that and sending it back if it makes them happy. It sounds like everybody is in agreement on the amendment, so.
It duplicative, I don't care if we do or if we don't, if you think, I mean.
We need to do it.
We need to do it, we can do it, but we need you to sign off as to form only, but.
There's really not a place on there to do that. It, they, it looks like they just sent the, the.
They pulled the two sheets out of the contract.
Pulled the two sheets out of the contract.
That you initial by that. Cause it's page twenty-two, I think, and maybe, I think that's about page twenty-two.
Yeah, you had us initial quite a few things in here.
I mean, I can respond to them by letter stating that, you know, we've already agreed to the proposed amendment, and then attach that to the back of it.
You know, the one who provided this, that other documentation in the first place, so that didn't make a.
If it's all the same, we can just initial them again, can't we?
Um, yeah, that works.
Yeah.
Okay, you get a motion?
I move to initial on the appropriate pages.
Second.
Ron Lewis has seconds to, uh, to initial the revision of the contract at the request of Henry and Hodgins. And per the advice of our ADA, there is no change in the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ron?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried, so. So, we have to sign it, and then you gotta send it to the, uh, Lamont Fire Department to sign, or, or, they got five, five?
Probably, I guess.
I guess, there's five places to sign, initial, but we're only, oh, maybe it's for the, them to, to sign, oh, initial, okay, got you. There's only two of them. Let's see, we've got the, the, the Grant County Executive Center at one thirty on here. Okay, so we'll come back.
Okay.
I don't, if someone from the fair.
Are they bringing anybody? Is Crossland bringing anybody here, or no?
No, I don't, I didn't request that they, I.
We thought the Fair Board would, we have, might have some representatives. Well, we've got, and it posted as one thirty, so we can.
I've got, um, I've got initials at one thirty up there, and I'll be down as soon as I get this done.
But that's like what, thirty minutes?
Probably.
Thirty minutes, okay. Um, so we'll have to come back in at session at one thirty though, cause we've got it posted. And then we can recess till, if we get everything else done, and then just recess until we come back. Okay, uh, new business, can Cindy have any new business?
No.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Max, do you have any new business?
Uh, no, I don't.
Pat, do you have any new business?
I have none.
And I have my mistress, Carmen's, and Max, where you?
Uh, have a CD meeting Wednesday, uh, over there. We're going to meet, advisory board's gonna meet before that, and discuss some personnel. With the, uh, ODOT putting a hole on the five-year plan for bid lettings and everything, just kinda throw the kink in some of the goings-on over there. We have projects to keep people busy, but we've got inspector gaps. And we're gonna try to, uh, do some patch sealing to help fill in some of them gaps, keep some people occupied. We spent the money to train them, we don't wanna let them go and have to retrain people.
Donnie said that, oh, my bridge is there, he said, he said they could kinda work on that.
That's good.
Yeah, so.
That'd be good. Really, uh, we're, uh, got our next bridge ready to go. We, uh, poured the floor last week on a bridge up here north of Medford, and, uh, somebody showed up and walked all over the top of the bridge.
Oh, no.
And it's not sunken into the bridge, it's just, it's, it's minor. But, it is, the same thing happened down in Garfield County, and they're having to grind out three inches of the bridge floor, because they actually sunk in and left tracks in the bridge, in the cement.
Well, you got a good footprint, let's find out what shoe that is and track it down. You know how they do that on TV?
This and here actually, uh, was cured fast enough that they had to step on it, get up on the ball of their feet and twist to, to make a mark. But it did mark it, I mean, you know. So, I, I don't understand people doing that, you know. We had, we had a problem with that bridge earlier. Uh, somebody drove out on the rebar. From the time we put the floor material and the rebar in it till we got ready to pour the concrete, we went up there to put the chairs in it, some more chairs. It had chairs, but we ran out of chairs. We got up there, and then they called back and said somebody drove out on, and mashed the rebar down. So we had to send a truck up there and cut the rebar up.
Too bad they poke a hole in the terrace.
I know. I just don't understand why they had to do that.
You know, Max, I'm wondering if each one of us in our districts, if we ought not to invest in some quality day-night game cameras that we can post that look at our bridge, or they, you know, one that is something under construction. When you have something under construction? You know, I think you can get those that, that don't flash at night, they're infrared or something. They'll flash at night so people don't know that, you know, if they flash, though, cause then they'll steal the, the video or the deal. And I'm not so sure you can't get them now, where they can, you don't even have to take the card out, you can download it to your.
Have a reader.
To, yeah, or something. You know, that might be something we oughta, uh, each of us oughta look into, maybe all, all of us getting one of those.
I've never had that problem until this last about year, and now we're starting to have a problem once in a while. So, it might be something we ought to.
Probably pay for itself the amount of time you save, having to go back and reduce, because people knew that they could get caught, they may not be doing it.
We got the third bridge built up by given, and we're starting on the fourth bridge up there, so. We're gonna, uh, talk to Max Davidson, we're gonna put, pour the two bridges the same day, so. Uh, they said that would be no problem. And where we're at is, uh, they can pour them from each end. The bridges are only like a hundred and seventy-five yards apart. So, we got one of them ri- uh, bridge tore out and put in, and the second one's tore out, but you can't, there's no bypass around to get to the other side, which, uh, they said they could pour it from each end, but anyway. We're gonna go from there. And that's all we have.
Oh, not much. We got the third mile of M and M shaled last week. There's some sinking areas that we're digging out and, and just putting like some surgery octane to try to get that done, so, uh, we're still a couple weeks from that project being fully complete, and that's, you know, that's if the weather. a couple of weeks from that project being fully complete. And that's, you know, that's if the weather, if we don't get any rain, um, we need the rain, so if it gets put off of that, that's, that's fine. With tractors coming in today, we're probably just gonna try to get busy. Boeing, um, they have all the tin off of the hog barn at the fairgrounds, so that's kinda odd to see that. It was nice, just business as usual. I'll probably go to that CED meeting on Wednesday. That's about it.
Well, I've been stealing signs in my district. I found, recovered some of them and, uh, the Billings City Pops called and found some of them. We don't know where they are, but they found some of them, so we're gonna go down and reclaim those today. Um, I leave for my, uh, NACO Western Interstate Reachout Conference on Saturday, so I will not be here next Monday for the board meetings. Be gone about a week, so. Got that going on. And we have finished our rep grant on a project, uh, so we're gonna be in the process of trying to get all of our documentation and we can't get a payment till we get, uh, copies of the cancelled warrants once they're paid. I will need to get those from the Treasurer's Office to turn in on my grant. We have to have, uh, somebody from Noto Inspected, we found some of those for inspection purposes. Um, and we are, we have, we are doing a, a rock and demo, a rockin' on that, so we're trying to get some more roads raw before we harvest. We've got our, all of our cemeteries are sprayed, so we're good there and we're just doing some other major and minor collectors on the spring. And just trying to catch up and be good stewards of our roads. And that's about all I've got.
Okay.
We need to recess.
I move to recess.
I second that motion.
Eleven thirty-two, motion by Bronf, second by Hess to recess and come back at one thirty. All in favor?
Vobbit?
Aye.
Bronf?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. We're officially recessed and I don't know if you need to just pause that or
Hey, Max, you know that pop